I got so many calendars, we don't use them. I love my county because.
Is that what's in the ACO packet?
Yeah, so you got one too.
Yeah, we all got them, I think.
I love my county because. I got a little feedback here.
One of the mics that might be a little turned up a little high. Trey's the master of audio.
Yeah, let's see what I can do here. They all look good to me.
Yeah. Like a soundboard or something, a mixer.
Lee, are you going to testify Thursday morning?
That's, yeah, that's the plan. I'm really glad they moved. They had the hearing set for today. I was gonna have to miss this meeting to testify.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, and hopefully, last time I checked, you know, so I was texting with Eric about that and thankfully, it sounds like they moved it, so I'm guessing.
They want to try to get as many live bodies out there too, so I'm working on that.
Maybe, yeah, I'll talk to Eric about handouts and whatnot if he's, if he wants to do that, but.
It's probably helpful.
Yeah, I think, but I think we need to talk about it first, so you know, with the game plan and everything, so.
Right. It is nine AM. So I am going to call this meeting of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, January 25th, 2022, and Commissioner Waterman, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will just mention that Commissioner Gable is via Zoom this morning, and also Luke Muller is on Zoom as well. If you have a cell phone, if you could silence it, if you need to take a call, you'd step out in the rotunda to take it, and also we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. Public comment will still be allowed during the open part of our meeting, and the two phone numbers are 882-6248 and 882-6297, and those are for items that are not on the agenda and for information only. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
None, no.
How about item number four then, action to approve the January 25th, 2022 agenda, motion by Van Dusen.
Second.
Second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the January 18th, 2022 minutes of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners.
So move.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Was there any additions or corrections? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any, that motion carries. Item number six, action to on a request from the pro pheasants to sell alcohol at an event at the Extension Center complex, and we have an individual here. If you would come forward, state your name and go ahead and sit on up here. And then just give us a little rundown of what you're asking and what it's.
Sounds good. I'm Nick Polatsky with County Professants and Minister Group for about eight years. This is our 20th banquet this year. We've done this, I believe, almost every year, to my knowledge, for our annual event at the Cuddington County Complex. So we're asking or requesting the permission to transfer liquor license from Second Street Station out to the banquet where we have it on February 18th this year, 2022.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion or comments or questions? I know this is, I've attended the event myself. It's very good. There's been no complaints, so.
Yeah, to my knowledge, we've not had a problem, so we hope keep that way.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Commissioner Gable? Any opposed? Not hearing any, that motion carries. All right, very good. Let's move on then to monthly reports. We'll start with Emergency Manager Director Andrew.
Morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Andrew.
I think this is the first time you've been here.
Yes, it is. Don't ask real hard questions yet, right?
All right, well, it's been a good month. I think it's been a productive month in emergency management. A lot of administrative onboarding mixed up right off the bat. I think those have done pretty well. I've been familiarizing myself with not just people from different agencies like PD, the Sheriff's Office, search and rescue, fire department, community health nurse, but also like with a lot of the plans and documents that we have. Kind of beast to work through, I mean, the emergency operations plan, the administrative manual for the the local, the L E M P G, so the local emergency management performance grants.
You did good there. You got that all.
Sherry's been quizzing me every day.
Sounds like you've been doing your homework.
But I've been trying to get myself familiarized with those. I mean, it's going to continue to take time to, you know, to actually know what's in them. But I mean, I think that I'm off to a pretty decent start, so hopefully I continue to brush up there. And then Jamie and Jim, so far they've both been super helpful. I mean, so does Sherry. I mean, she's, it's huge having her in that office, so they've all been a very good help to me. The L E M P G requires multiple classes within the first 12 months and then additional ones within 24 months. I did the independent study, IS 800, which is the last prerequisite for ICS 300. So I did that. I completed that course this month, and then I also signed up for the required courses in the first two years. Well, I got everything for the first 12 months. I'm, I have a C4, and I should have those done by May. There's another one that's required within the first 24 months that I have, so I signed up for IS, or ICS 300, 101, 102, and 103, so.
You can take all those online?
No, so.
300.
Was, was online and then the other four that I signed up for all in person.
Okay.
So I mean, and then a couple in here. I'm sure he's been getting our quarterly report for the L E M P G prepared for submission. That's due by the end of the month, and then I was going to the hazmat class that Don and Scott from the Fire Department instructed. It was primarily the law enforcement students from OAT. See, not right. Really solid course. I mean, I've been through it, you know, in Law Enforcement Academy, but it was good to get brushed up on. Biggest things for the upcoming month. So I guess the biggest thing is the PDM, the pre-disaster mitigation plan. That's important because, I mean, it's a requirement for a lot of the funding, like lots of local agencies get as far as grants and stuff. I mean, they're good for five years. We have a contract with First District to, to help us rewrite it. Or we will have, I guess, soon. There's, there's an agreement in place. But the brick grant, the building resilient infrastructure and community grants, we got the initial award letter back from the state at the end of last week, so we have that on the agenda for this upcoming, or next week. Commissioner Hampton, I think that you're one of the authorized signatures for that, so once we get that signed, we can get it sent back to the state and actually sign the official agreement with First District, so we can start getting a game plan laid out, so, so we can ensure that it's back to the state by December, so it can be approved by national. We have our region, regions manager meeting later this week, 911 coordination meeting a little bit later. Also in the next month, dive tank inspections, search and rescue, we're laying out the timeline for our our fundraising events, and then I'm going to attend ICS 300, three-day cap class. And then the Homeland Security Grant is the other, like, major thing that we have coming up. So we met with, or we have to meet with departments to ensure that we have our priorities laid out for the Homeland Security Grant this year. The application window is open up until February 18th. As of yesterday, no one from our county had completed an application in that year, which is the website for our, like, where the FEMA grants are applied for. We have visibility of people or applicants within our county. And then I guess finally, the other thing that we did at the request of our commissioner liaison is we fixed a sign.
Fixed a sign?
Not a big deal. I don't know, I guess I didn't even question.
There was a sign up there by the button, like, push. And then going to see Jim and stuff, every time I go to the window. I never, and the sign was rolled up, never realized what the button was for. I put a new plaque up.
Doing pretty well with the acronyms. It's, it's hard to learn all them, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, there's.
I mean, for every job, there's a whole new set of them, you know?
Yeah, and a lot of these are, like, really similar.
And when you spill them out, it doesn't mean anything else usually. We can't keep up with all of them. That's, it's tough.
All right, well.
Thank you.
Good job.
I would also add, Andrew was part of the Community Partners Meeting that was held, and he did a good job on that as well, so he jumped in on that. Commissioner Gable, did you have something?
Yeah, just on the Homeland Security Grant, can you just review what that's generally for, you know, for those that might be watching?
Yes, so there is a portion of it that is required for, for, for law enforcement right off the top. So that's initially set aside. I mean, it typically, I think that, well, this year, the biggest priority is for radios that are P25 compliant, so apparently they use a narrower bandwidth. So, I mean, I think that that's, that's kind of the consensus that the highest priority is, and I don't know, I mean. Sure. Verify that, but that's my, that's my understanding.
Do the priorities kind of change from year to year depending on what? Okay, all right, thanks.
And that funding has dwindled, so it's good that everybody kind of works together on priorities and, because otherwise each agency doesn't receive very much money, so.
Absolutely. I mean, there's, there's not enough for every, every project to get funded by through Homeland Security Grants, so I mean, that's why, like, we're I mean, everybody from our region is going to get together and kind of cash out, like, which, which priorities are gonna get funded.
Yes. Thank you, Andrew. All right, then, we will move on then to the sheriff for his monthly report. Good morning, Brad.
Do you want to turn that mic up, Brad, just a little bit?
Yeah, there you go. Is that a little better?
Yep.
Well, I have a lot of information here today. We got the end of the year report to go over. Pass these out. You guys want to pass them down? Might be one extra here, if I remember right.
Yeah, I think there's an extra one. Or is that just?
Actually, our monthly report.
GT, you want to copy GT?
Yep, you should have one copy in there for.
You have that other, the other two that were expressed, or?
Yep, I'll grab them for him here. Well, to get started, we'll hit our monthly report really quick. Like, first of all, we'll hit the monthly balance sheet. That's the last one I gave you guys there. For the month of December of '21, there, our bank balance was $7,658.50. We collected $28 in copy fees, $6,691 in shares fees that were collected, and $350 in warrant fees collected for a grant total of $7,069. Lee's got it pulled up on the big screen, or someone does here. Yeah, look at the jail numbers and some of our sheriff's numbers for the month of December. You can see that up in the top right there, there was 580 cases and calls for service that were responded to, 15 accidents that were responded to, 85 warrants were served, 177 civil papers were served, and 3,814 transport miles. Scroll down to the middle there, you'll see our average daily population in the jail was 56 for the month of December. 65 was our high, 49 was our low average daily population. We had 20 people on the scram bracelet, seven people on the remote breath. That's a new thing I'd mentioned a couple months ago on the 24/7 program. We had 47 people on the twice daily PBTs and 45 people on the twice weekly UAs, and zero people on the sweat patch for a grand total of 119 people on the 24/7 program. You can see that column up, up on top there. Scroll on down to the bottom there on the out-of-county contracts for the month of December, we collected $6,779.35. Work release fees, we collected $1,680. 24/7 fees, we collected $6,721, and scram fees, we collected $3,317. Some of the things we've been working on, we just recently held an Alice training for all the county employees and the state employees that work here in the courthouse. We've had some good reviews on that. I do have the signup roster. I've been planning on getting that up to you, Cindy, if you guys want that for your records, so I don't know if we get a rebate on our insurance or not for that, but it sounds like it was well, well taken, so.
Yes, I did attend that. It was very good training. Makes you think about things that you ordinarily would not even consider, so.
Yep, that's the goal, is to try to get you thinking a little bit, so. One other thing that we're, we're trying to finalize and work on here is our, with, working with Prodigy Solutions. That's the, one of the commissary partners that we've looked at and kind of been working with on a contract to go forward with, so we're trying to work on the language on that, getting that finalized with our state attorney and with their attorneys to make sure that that works for us, and try to work on a menu that we'll use for that, so that'll be coming up here near, or sooner than later here to the board, so our commissary contract. Are there any questions on that? I'll jump over to the yearly report.
Just a quick question, Sheriff. On the, on the remote breath, is that included in those 24/7 numbers with the, you know, I know with that, you have a, a kind of a web-based tool that gives you the county, the monthly count for that. Is that remote breath a part of that, or do we need to?
That should be included in that number there.
Okay.
It should be included in, with those numbers, yes.
Is that piece of equipment, I, I know it's very, very useful. Is it holding up? Is it, you know, when you have a piece of equipment, this is pretty technical, has, can have glitches in it. You know, have you had glitches and?
Actually, it's been working really well. We haven't had any concerns or any. The weather, everything's been working good with it. We haven't had any concerns with that remote breath. It, it does. It saves a lot of time, but they can, and also for the offender, they can have that with them. It shows what we're talking about here. For people that don't know, it's basically a, it's a very small telephone-type looking thing here. It has a camera on it, and it, when it's time for you to PBT and do your daily breath test, it sends a little alert. It takes a video and it shows that this is the correct person, and then they PBT in there and make sure that it's the correct person. Takes a sample, sends it off, and it's all done remotely, so.
But you gotta put your buck in, right?
That's actually $5 for that. $5 a day, so it's a little bit more than coming in and doing that, so, you know, so.
Pay for convenience.
Pay for the convenience, exactly, so seems to be working pretty good, so.
Good.
Did that answer your question, Lee?
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect, all right. We'll jump on down to our yearly report here. Lot of data to go over. I'll try to keep it quick, so we'll get out of here at a decent time. Just a couple numbers I want to share. At the security booth, we collected all those numbers. We had 80,413 people that we had screened through the metal detector in '21 compared to 2020. We had 72,083 people. We were closed, the courthouse was closed for a few months there during 2020, so those numbers are a little bit different there. So it's an average of about 326 people that are coming through the security booth on a, any given day in 2021.
Brad, where's those numbers at? Did you give those?
I, that just.
Okay.
Can I get you, just to give the, the top, the year one for security booths individuals going through, what was that number again?
The, the, the numbers for 2021, we screened 80,413 people. Yeah, there you go. You got it right there. Even better. Yep, there was 80,413 people that were screened through the metal detector in '21, and in '20, there was 72,083 people that were screened. We can go on down and go through all the x-rays and stuff. We're done on the packages, but those are not really that important.
Do you have a list of weapons? How many weapons were seized?
We do. There was 839 weapons that were turned away in the year of '21. Some of those were scissors, knives, tasers, a pistol, box cutters, ammunition, et cetera, that were all turned away, so.
It's working.
It, it is working. It's catching what it was designed to do, so. And we'll jump to the next year-end year report here on some of the Sheriff's Office numbers here. That's the little Excel sheet that you guys got pulled up right here. For '21, you'll see traffic complaints were up a little bit. There was 506 of those vehicle accidents. There was 395 accidents that we responded to compared to the year before at 322. Animal complaints were 274. Assaults, 26 assaults. We responded to burglaries of 16. You can see a couple of those are down from 2020. You know, it was 38 assaults in 2020 compared to 26. Burglaries are down a little bit by four. Disorderly conduct calls, there was 81 of those that responded to drug narcotics calls. It was like 17 calls that came in there. 43 theft calls, and there was 1,300 warrants issued, which was up roughly a couple hundred more, 180 more than the year before. Go down to the rest type here. Drug narcotics complaints, we rested 173 people there. Intentional damages, there was 13 arrests. DUI of 99 arrests. Underage consumption, 37 arrests. It's a little bit higher than the year before. Assaults were 58 arrests, and all other arrests were 56. Jump to the next page there. You'll see some of the financials and some of the money that went, went through the Sheriff's Office here. You'll see that there was a total money of $369,131 that we dealt with and worked on, our sheriff sales and everything that we've dealt with. $74,648.54 in sheriff's fees that were collected, and $7,071 in executions collected, and $5,325 in warrant fees that were collected. You can see that civil papers, there was 2,052 civil papers served in the year '21. That was about 300 less than 2020. If you look at executions, there was 100 executions that we worked. Warrants served. You can see that there was 1,300 warrants that were issued. We served 1,070 of those warrants. Calls for service were down a little bit compared to 2020. You can see 7,375 calls for service for the year '21 compared to 2020. It was 7,569, so 180, 190 less calls for service. Not a big difference there. Transport miles, you can see that those have been back in the saddle again, and we've been up there again, 53,639 miles compared to 2020 with COVID and everything. That was 42,392 miles. Three mortgage foreclosures and 158 accidents investigated with 400 traffic citations ever read.
Brad, you might want to back up to, for some people listening or getting a hold of this report, executions. Explain.
Executions. It's not, not what you think it is. Everybody hears the word execution, they're thinking of the, you know, the hanging out in the street type thing, right? An execution is a part of the civil process that the sheriff is responsible for as his statutory duties to fulfill. An execution is when someone has a lawsuit or something against somebody and somebody's owed some money. You can turn that execution over to the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office has to investigate and find out if this person has any funds or any items that I can take and sell at a sheriff's sale to fulfill that debt. So there's a lot of background work on them executions when we're working on an execution, so.
Brad, I know that we've talked before about the transport miles, and now we're starting to see those creep back up again. Is there anything we can do to, to reduce that? I mean, I, it seems like that's a lot of, a lot of time on the road, and that, that's a lot of risk for our people.
Well, I'm really kind of hoping, like, say, when we're talking transport miles, we're talking, we're, we're going to get warrants, we're going to bring people that have mental health, needing mental health help to maybe HSA Yankton, or we're going to pick them up, or we're going to Aberdeen, or we're, so there's a lot of statutory responsibility that the sheriff has to do on, when we're talking transport miles. We actually do combine, I actually got, usually put that in my report that I have for myself here. We combine all, and as many people together as we can when we're going somewhere. We'll typically try and hold off on a transporter until we have a full bus, just to conserve on some of them miles. Sometimes you can't do that if you have a mental health person that needs to go. We have a certain amount of time that we have to go and get them down to Yankton to get their treatment. So we do manage those miles the best that we can. Some of those miles are just flat out out of my control for state attorneys. We have to go somewhere to pick somebody up. Maybe it's Washington, or maybe it's somewhere else. Like, say, we, we do look at flying versus driving and all the logistics that go into that, so.
We talked about a contract with US Marshal Service at one time for their bus. They don't come through here anymore.
They don't do that anymore. They quit doing that service many years ago. The, that was a service they used to do, is you'd be able to pay them a small fee, and they'd be able to go pick somebody up and drop them off. They quit doing that. Man restrictions, man hours and whatnot, so.
If we could regionalize the HSA facilities, that would, it'd be interesting to find out how many wire miles are actually, you know, at Yankton. You know, there, there's a lot of them, I know.
That's something that I'm gonna look forward to, try to break down a little bit more here going forward in the 21.
Promoting and encouraging them to pass this legislation and to fund these regional facilities. That would be a, a, an item that would be, I think, very important for them to see. You know, the dollars saved in transportation alone.
Yep, I actually presented at a mental health conference here in the state, and that was some of the things that we talked about when I was, Kerry Johnson and I both presented. That was one of the topics that I kind of presented on, was mileage and the transports and being able, the, the man hours of driving. It's, it's a, it's a seven-hour trip. By the time you drive three and a half hours to Yankton.
Well, and if we.
Turn around and drop someone off and come back.
You know, if we're putting, you know, 55,000 miles a year on a vehicle, we're gonna burn up vehicles pretty quick.
Yeah. Also.
Sure. In line with Commissioner Van Dusen's question about the, the Marshals, is, does this Department of Corrections still run a transport service, or does that not really applicable to county jails?
The, the DOC, they do run a bus across the state. It goes from Rapid City, and it stops in Pier, and there's a few stops amongst across the state, and it ends up in Sioux Falls. They do that twice a week. We do use that bus quite often. I think it's 100 and 120 some dollars or something like that off the top of my head to get someone across the state. So we do use that if we're getting somebody from Pier, or if we're trying to get someone to Pier, or even Rapid City back and forth, we'll use that bus throughout the week, so.
Right.
So without that, it'd be even worse, I guess, so.
Well, I gotta be in Pier on Thursday. If you want me to bring anybody back, just let me know.
Well, maybe you want to take the bus. So, all right, we'll jump on and we'll talk about some of the jail numbers here. That's that other four page report here. You'll see for twenty twenty one, our average daily population was up a little bit compared to twenty. We were at fifty nine point one three, our ADP. You see, we're starting to kind of get back to normal a little bit. That's about fourteen and a half more than it was for twenty twenty. But if you look at nineteen and eighteen, we're still below what those numbers were, so. That's, that is, we jumped down to the total number of bookings. There was a couple hundred, two hundred and eleven more bookings than there was in twenty twenty. So for twenty one, we did two thousand four hundred and fifty eight bookings for the year.
Brad, I have a question. When we go back to the ADP, with those numbers being down, has the added courtroom helped that, to help that process of those individuals to get through that? Or is it hard to attribute that to that?
It's hard to say that that is working. We still have inmates, like say, over thirteen hundred days that are in our facility, so I don't. It's hard for me to say that that would be working or not. I, that'd be a better question for the courts. I would say that whether or not it's kind of fallen.
That's not really your deal. That's more of a UJS issue of pushing them through the court.
Right, but I just wondered if maybe that might be some of the reason that some of these are for not staying. But yeah, I know, I do know we have some that are long timers as well.
Well, I think one thing, at least I, I can't see the report that you're looking at. I don't have that one, but the, it's, you know, just looking at the, at the last year's report, it looks like, you know, we're down in that, you know, low sixties, high fifties area, which is a lot better than what we were before we built it, so. It, but it's kind of, it's kind of a hard thing, like, like the sheriff says, quantify. So maybe if we come back to the question about the jail, that would be a, you know, question to sort through with with the, with the UJS. Try, I may try to do the best we can. It might be somewhat anecdotal, but I think, you know, that's, yeah, that's a good question.
All right, jumping to the next page here, kind of building off what Myron was talking about a little bit, about having some regional facilities with Kerry Johnson and HSA building here. These are some numbers that I started keeping track of. Looks like in two thousand eighteen. These are people that have been held in Coggin County Detention Center that have no charges, but they're being held on mental health charges. Not mental health charges, but mental health holds, I should say. You can see in nineteen and twenty, those numbers were sixty five and in twenty one, it's down to forty one. Sometimes a safe room is maybe full. Maybe somebody's combative or whatnot, so we're kind of looking forward to hopefully getting that number down to zero here. When HSA gets their new facility up and going, hopefully we can not have anybody in our facility that has a mental health hold.
Right, because that is not the place for them unless they are harmed to themselves or someone else.
Absolutely not the place for them to be. If you jump on down, you can see the total prisoner days for twenty one, it was twenty one thousand seven hundred and thirty four compared to twenty twenty, which was sixteen thousand four hundred and forty two. If you jump down to the contract prisoner days, there was only one thousand three hundred and fifteen contract prisoner days, so. You can see that most of them were actually Coggin County inmates, if you compare those two numbers.
Hey Sheriff, I'm sorry. Could you say what the number of days were for the first quarter you said?
For twenty one, the total prisoner days for twenty one were twenty one thousand seven hundred and thirty four prisoner days.
Okay, that's what, yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah. And then for the auto county contracts and DOC holds, there was one thousand three hundred and fifteen of those days.
Thank you.
So if you jump on down, you'll see the twenty four seven fees collected were ninety four thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars and twenty cents, which is an increase of forty four thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Some of that's due to COVID again. Last year was a strange year. If you jump down, you'll see there was thirty two thousand twenty two PBTs that were given in twenty one with eighty nine failures. So you can see that our technology and that machine that we've been using is definitely being used and program does work. There's five thousand one hundred and thirty nine UAs given with eighty failures and three hundred and seven people that missed them. Miss is also a failure. They didn't show up. There were twenty two drug patches applied with four failures and fifty nine people at some point were wearing the scram bracelet with five failures. The detention center collected about nine hundred and eighty four thousand five hundred and five dollars and seven cents. All the money that actually came through the correctional officer's hands. Of that money, two hundred and seventy nine thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars and eight cents was remitted back to the county general fund. And then if you take the seventy nine thousand nine hundred and seventy three dollars and fifty four cents that the sheriff's office made, that was a grand total of three hundred and fifty nine thousand five hundred and thirty nine dollars, five hundred and thirty one dollars and sixty two cents that was remitted to the county general fund. That pretty much sums that up. And last page, you'll see the ADP throughout the whole back to nineteen eighty five, you'll see the kind of progression of the ADP for the jail nineteen eighty five. For you guys who are wondering, it was twenty point eight five and twenty one was fifty nine point one three.
What happened in twenty seventeen?
It was slowly building up and up and up and, yeah, I remember in two thousand seventeen, there was one day where we hit ninety nine inmates on one day. That's the most that we'd ever had in our facility, so. Especially when we only hold ninety six, so.
I think that some of the numbers that just really make me shake my head is, you know, like total number of bookings. Just imagine the paper shuffling that goes on over there. That's a how do you keep it straight? It seems like it's almost a nightmare.
I, we gotta commend our staff. We have very good staff over there at the detention center. If anybody who's ever spent any time over there, it's, it's, they're balancing, it's a zoo. They're busy. There are seventeen different things that are happening all at once and they're, they're balancing all these things and they're making sure that everybody is getting in and out when they're supposed to and getting the medical treatment that they're supposed to and get fed and their their medical and medicine and everything. So I gotta commend our staff. It is a zoo and they do a very good job.
Pass on to to them from the board that we are very, very grateful for their services and their work, their hard work, because there's a lot of, like I said, a lot of paper shuffling. The other number that I heard, I was listening to your report on the radio yesterday and you talked about what it costs to keep a prisoner for a day. It's a hundred bucks a day. And that's, that's, I, I kind of like that number because it's easy to remember. When people ask, just what does it cost, you know, to keep a prisoner for a day? And a hundred dollars is a nice round. It's not quite, it's a little over a hundred, I think.
It, to, to build on that a little bit, how I figure that is I take our total prisoner days and I take the total money that was spent in that budget year to run that facility. Last year was a little bit more because we had a large camera project and we had a pipeline and project that all, I take the expense of keeping him, the, the heat, the electric, the, the meals, everything to keep that place up and going and I divide it out. So last year it was a hundred and six dollars and sixty eight cents to house the inmates that we had. Of course, you have a, you get a better bang for your buck if you have more inmates, which is not our goal. But if we take out the pipeline and project, I did figure it a couple of different ways. That was a little over a hundred thousand dollars. If you take that out, you're about ninety seven dollars and ninety nine cents, so.
Brad, what is our contract rate with counties?
Right now it's eighty five dollars. I'm working on redoing that and I'm gonna up it to ninety five dollars. I think that's a fair rate to.
It's pretty standard around the state.
It's about in the middle. Somewhere at around a hundred, somewhere down around that eighty, eighty five still, so.
Line of numbers here. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Gable, do you have any questions?
Oh, that's good, good report. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on then to item number eight, discussion with Rich Om regarding Fallout Shelter Ministries project. I would just like to mention that this is something that he has been in contact with the zoning officer and found out that it is not an allowed use in the joint jurisdiction area, which to explain that a little more is Myron and I were part of that. When the joint jurisdiction was being written and one of the items that the city said they didn't want allowed was conference facilities because of the ability for growth in and around the joint jurisdiction for the city. In September, it was brought before the planning commission. And they weren't interested in doing an amendment or amending the ordinance to allow it. And I am happy that he's come before this board though to explain what you want to do. It's part of the process of the planning commission is why it, to avoid any violations that you weren't allowed to go before that board. So we welcome you to explain today what you want to do. So, and just in essence of time, five to seven minutes, kind of just to try to give an overview of that's and then that will give time for commissioners to ask questions and and, all right, I'll just let you go.
That's what I tried to plan on. I appreciate you guys' time and appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about what we want to do. So for those who don't know me, my name is Rich Om. My wife and family and I have fond and Fallout Shelter Ministries. And Fallout Shelter Ministries, what's the easiest way to describe this quickly? We, our, our mission statement is preparing people for the unexpected and you have a copy of our mission statement and a little bit of what we do in that packet that I gave you. And Lee, I emailed you one. I don't know if you saw it come through.
Oh, you should see it on the screen. Is it on the screen?
No, that's not, that's a different thing. That's what Luke gave us. Okay, that's a background of what's happened so far.
Let me see if I can find it. Okay.
I just emailed it just minutes ago to you.
Oh, okay. Let me see if I can find it.
So anyways, so what we do is we, we teach self-defense and we teach youth taekwondo and, but we also do outreach in the community from a ministerial aspect. We do everything from providing some food to some people, to providing transportation and security and different things like that for various organizations. And our, our goal is not to supplant or replace any other organization. We just want to assist them the best way we can. So through the, so we've been a nonprofit since twenty sixteen, but we've been doing this work probably since two thousand and five and it's grown and, you know, I used to be a, an investigator with the police department where I saw a lot of domestic violence and sexual assault and those things. And, and we found that we needed to do something besides just investigate it. It was in our heart to, to really try to help change. And as, as the sheriff was just talking, you know, your jail numbers are, are all over the place and our goal is to help give people that might wind up in jail a safe place to come and, you know, find some community and find an opportunity to grow. They can come into our gym or they wouldn't necessarily come into a church and we can meet them and help grow them into, you know, into an upstanding community member if that's at all possible. So obviously today we're seeking your guys' support and assistance in navigating all the zoning issues. And I understand that, that as it sits right now, that the excuse me, the cold is apparently getting to my throat. But apparently the, you know, that religious conference center, which Luke tells us is what we fit best as is not allowed in that joint jurisdiction area. We, we hope that you guys would be willing to change that. That's our hope. So I want to give a little rundown on what we're trying to do with the Crans Farm. I think most of you are familiar with the Matt Crans Farm. A mile and a half south of Walmart. If not, there's a little map and a little overhead view of it there. So phase one, if you will, and let me get to my other screen. Phase one is the purchase of the farm and we're, we have actually done a feasibility study and negotiated some of that already, so we have an idea what that looks like. But we want, so we want to purchase the property and then we want to start to remodel the existing structures to facilitate to self-defense training and the different things that we do now. And, and also expand our youth programs and ministry options, giving the options to all the churches in the community to come out and use the property at their will, give it to, you know, four age clubs and, and Boy Scouts and whoever needs a spot to come that, you know, and have that space to use. That's one of the things we want to do. So obviously we want to expand our ministry options and that includes worship services and missional outreach and different things like that. And there's a lot that goes into that. Another thing that we want to do is build a community garden for adult education where like people that maybe live in an apartment or something like that could come out and and have a community garden where they work in it together. And, you know, we'll get some, some old pro gardeners in there and teach people how to garden and different things like that. So moving on to phase two, we want to build out a, an approximately one hundred by two hundred training center that has dormitories, kitchen offices, meeting spaces and the, the capacity to have emergency housing, which is a big deal in our community, I know. That's, and that was also a concern of the zoning committee and how we were gonna process that, but our plan is to have a secure, separate entrance for that emergency housing. And it's not intended to be a homeless shelter. But would we take a homeless person that was having emergency? Absolutely. It's, it's intended to be a place where if Troy, your house burned down, you could have a place to come and weather the storm for a few days until you sorted things out. Or if there was, you know, God forbid a tornado or something came through town and we were successfully safe to have a place for as many people in the community as we could put in there. Our, our goal is to support the community to the best way that we know how. So that expansion, that hundred by two hundred building will allow, one of our primary goals is missionary education. So we've worked with a lot of missionary groups and we want to be able to bring those missionary groups in and do sustainability training with them, like, because when you go to like T-More, Lesay, for instance, you can't just walk down the street to the Walmart. You have to know how to butcher a chicken. You have to know how to raise a vegetable. You have to know all these different things. And we want to provide that opportunity to those people. So we want to provide capacity for corporate retreat to meetings or community events or maybe a wedding here and there, different things like that. And then again, that whole facility, we would be able to house people in an emergency capacity. That's our goal. So phase three is a little simpler. We want to add in what we call, what the millennials call a maker's space. The idea of that is like a carpentry workshop where you can come and use it. Like again, if you're an apartment dweller and we got a lot of new apartments coming into town, it gives you a place to come and safely learn how to, you know, build some, you know, whatever you want to build, you know, fix a door, build a cabinet, you know, give people that opportunity. We're actually, one of our board members is in negotiations with a Bible school and our goal is to become a satellite campus for them. So we would have the opportunity for people in our region to come and, and get a master's level training in, in that. And then we want to develop an outdoor facility to to have whatever kind of event, you know, whether it's a, like I said, a wedding or a small concert, different things like that. You can see on the next couple pages or next page, a little bit from our feasibility study. We interviewed, or Tom Paulson actually interviewed sixty nine people in the community that were considered leaders in the community, either, you know, financially or whatever. And ninety two percent of them said very positive or positive towards that emergency housing. And eighty nine percent said positive or very positive towards the idea of the Fallout Shelter home base, as I've described it to you today. So again, our, our goal or our, our desire is to ask for your support. And I know I know the zoning process is, is cumbersome and it seems to be, you know, it seems to be difficult to change things. But our goal isn't to interfere with any other plans that are in the area, just to use that farmstead to develop, you know, what we feel is our calling from God. So with that, I would happily hear any questions.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you for the rundown. That's, thank you for explaining your intent. I think that's a, it's a good, good rundown. Thank you.
The rundown was interesting. Seems like there's some redundancy here and I would go back to the. Uh, the rundown was interesting. Uh, seems like there's some redundancy here and I would go back to the zoning and planning board with their decision.
What uh, did? Is, is Luke on here? Is he prepared to start, I guess?
We'll get the questions with Rich done first and then I'll have Luke come on and explain what that process would be if that's something.
Rich, if you, if the zoning, if we're not able to get the zoning changed, what happens to this project?
Well.
Where do you go from here?
That's, that's the question, right? So. Um, when, and this is maybe a little esoteric, but when we're out on that property, we can feel. God's direction and God's call and pull to that property. And I, I know that's not a legal or binding issue, but for us, that's supremely important. That, that's where we're at. Um, regardless of, of the decision. Of the board, um, we're going to continue in some fashion. It'll make it much more difficult. Because this property is ideally located for what we do already, for our, for, for our youth programs at the gym and. And for people to be able to get to easily and find it simply. Uh, it's, it's like the perfect property, the perfect location. Um, so when we, when we just, when we discuss Plan B. Um, I'm going to tell you quite honestly, we really haven't formed a Plan B. We've discussed, well, maybe, you know, may move it out in the three miles into the, into the county somewhere and try to find a piece of land that's appropriate. Or maybe we try to find something in the city, which we've looked at for years, actually trying to find a viable. Space in the city, but we haven't found anything that meets the needs. You know, in the space, especially, especially for the money, right? Cause that's obviously has, has to be a critical piece of it. So Plan B is, you know, push it out further, maybe think smaller. But we would prefer Plan A.
Alright. Anyone else have any other questions?
Are we going to allow any of the folks that are here to support?
I guess since this is just for information only and with Rich, kind of at this point, I think we'll limit it to Rich. And we do see and, and recognize all the individuals that are here, but um. I guess I think it's best just to have Rich's presentation for today.
Thank you for sharing.
I appreciate your time.
Anything else you want to add, Rich?
Um, we just really ask for your support. I, I, again, I know, I know the zoning is. A beast and uh. You know, if, if, if there's, if we need to hire somebody to help streamline that or you know, a, a professional of some sort that would help. Help us through that, we can do that. You know, we just, we just need to know what you guys need. So, and our goal is to make Cottington County better, you know, to make our region better. We're not building. Uh, half. Can I say that? Half-assed thing. We're, we're, we're building, it'll be the premier training center in the upper Midwest. It will be a place that you want to bring your family and go, wow, this is a great space. Okay? We're. When we're called by God, we're not called to mediocrity. We're called to excellence and that's what we're doing.
Well, Rich, I, I appreciate you being here and I appreciate the supporters coming out today. I know that the zoning uh, thing is a, is an issue. Been working on that for quite a while. Both Brenda and Myron sit on that board as well and uh. You know, our job as a commission isn't to, isn't to just put the kibosh on projects. Our job is to do what's best for the residents of Cottington County. And uh, so I'm sure that there's people out there that are opposed to this. I'm sure that there's probably a great deal that support it. Um, so we'll see where it goes from here, but do you feel like you're getting your, your answers that you're looking for from, from us as far as where you need to go from here?
We'll see.
Okay.
See what your, see what your decision is, you know.
I mean, I guess I don't know what the next step would be and I'm not sure that Rich knows.
Right. We'll call Luke on it and he will explain it to us if this is um. You know, if we'd want to initiate an amendment to the ordinance, you know, what would have to happen, that would have to happen at a later meeting and he'll tell us the process of that. So.
Okay.
Awesome if you did.
Alright.
I had a quick question on, I had a quick question on process. So maybe, maybe it's a question for Luke or um. The zoning board, but Rich, have you talked to the zoning board yet or is this your first approach to the county?
Um, so I didn't get to speak at the zoning uh, meeting, um, but they did uh. Not exactly sure. They, they, they did propose a conversation about it, um, but it, it really didn't take off at all.
Right. Lee, just to explain, um, just um, because of due process. It wasn't, it isn't something that.
This is what happened.
Right. Um, it was brought to the board, but there was, there's uh, for due process and violations, it only was a board discussion. And that's how that happens. But Luke can explain that better.
Okay, alright.
So.
Look forward to it.
Right. Appreciate what you had to say and thank you for coming in as well for everyone that came today. And so now I'll call Luke on and you can explain the process to us, please.
Sure. The uh, commissioners first and Mr. Olm and anyone there in the audience, just want to make sure everyone can hear me. Um, uh, nod or blink or something if you can.
Luke, do you want to put up any slides? This is Lee. Do you want me to put up those slides?
Yeah, you want to, do you want to go back to what you had up earlier that I had sent out and it's just going to be probably like the second slide is all.
Okay.
Um. And I'll. I'm going to kind of work backwards on questions that I heard into there. I, the, the one, did Mr. Olm approach? Is this the first he's talked to anybody? No. Um, uh, from our office, he has uh, from the zoning office, he has spoken and then, and then he's been very patient. Honestly, uh, we haven't had, it's been a long time since we've had anyone as respectful as he in the group as far as working through the process. So I commend him for uh, just kind of following through, but the uh. Uh, the question as far as the planning commission and Commissioner Hanton mentioned it. Uh, it, it's an unfortunate situation. It's very difficult for someone to kind of come in and initiate something through the planning commission. And I'll get to the right side of this slide in just a second. But when you go into the planning commission, you got to understand that you're also talking to the board who would hear a future permit. And they can't get into the details. Frankly, um, you know, some of the detail that was discussed here even is a stretch for. What this board should hear, given that you're going to have a couple of board members on it, but you certainly couldn't have heard that at the planning commission. So that unfortunately, he wasn't, he wasn't allowed to speak any further into that. So this was a better um, forum for him to address you. So that, that worked out a lot better. So in the end, as he noted and as you've heard, that planning commission wasn't interested in issuing an amendment, but let's talk about why that's important. Uh, the process, as you're aware, the property that he has uh, looked at and kind of settled on as of now. Is in the joint jurisdiction zoning area for the city of Watertown and Kinden County. Uh, you need to think of that as a separate jurisdiction entirely and that jurisdiction. The way that it's written right now is that, well frankly, and in state law, is that the only way that it can be amended. Is by both the city planning commission and I, sorry, the city and county planning commissions. As well as the city council and county commission, all agreeing to amend the ordinance. And the primary way to initiate that uh, is through, you know, one of these boards. It's, I'm, I know it may not seem easy to Mr. Olm and Fallout Shelter here ministries, but frankly, what's going on is the easiest way to get your answer. Um, although it may not be the answer you're looking for. The uh, process, the county planning commission could initiate a change, the city planning commission could, the city council or the county commission. Um, county planning commission is kind of weighed in as to where they see things. Uh, that's why he's here with you, with the county commission and uh, all four of those entities he could discuss this with. After what would happen is if the county commission saw this and said, you know what, absolutely. Uh, let's talk about initiating an amendment. What you're doing at that point is one, you're going to have to figure out what that amendment looks like. Uh, like Mr. Olm mentioned, uh, we frankly don't have a hole for this to fit in in the ordinance and that's why it would have to be amended. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure that the religious conference facility is the perfect, perfect spot for that either. Um, but it's the closest thing that we've got in, say, the county ordinance. Something different could be put together, but you'd have to rely on someone to help you through that process. Uh, put together something could take a while. Um, likely it would be something that'd be brought forth by. Uh, the individual who's looking for it and see if you want to vote up or down on it. The, what would happen then is if you decide to initiate that amendment. Is it then it would go to a joint public hearing of the two planning commissions of the city and the county. And the way that both the uh, the county's ordinance and the city's ordinance are written. Is that regardless of the recommendation of the planning commissions. Uh, in order to overturn their decisions, it takes a two-thirds majority to override either of their, those. So the bottom line is they'd make a recommendation after a public hearing on whether or not to change the rule. Then the city council and county commission would sit together, hold a first reading, second reading and public hearing. And then they'd vote. So there you go. There's the process. You wind up having uh, multiple meetings and then of course you would publish. A notice in the paper and uh, you know, there'd be the twenty-day referral period. I've heard from some people that have contacted the zoning office. About how long it takes to refer something like that as well, if that was made. So the bottom line is that that's, that's the process. The first step in that would be for uh, one of you, if you decide you wanted to do it, to go ahead and. Um, at a future meeting, put that on the agenda that you plan to initiate that change and, and then uh, probably notify him from there and. Uh, go from there as far as timelines and. That's about all I've got.
So Luke, I just noticed on a, just looking at this, this slide here, so um. Is the one that I put on the screen is that, that's the list of things that are not. Um, permitted.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's I guess a good point. I mean, I, I really, that's a slide that I, I showed at the planning commission. Just kind of point out when, when we went through that process back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Uh, Brenda alluded to it earlier. Sorry, Commissioner Hanton alluded to that earlier. Where the, the group sat together and really went through everything that is happening in the joint jurisdiction area. And is allowed in the joint jurisdiction area. And what you see there is a list of items that were listed as allowed in the Ag district of the rest of the county. Or the county uh, before the joint jurisdiction ordinance was written. And at the time, it was decided that uh, those things that are listed on the screen there. Would in some way, shape or form not be compatible with the future development of the city of Watertown. Until the property was annexed into the city limits. In some cases, obviously, uh, you're not going to stick a twenty-five-hundred head feedlot in the middle of town. Uh, but uh, there were other ones that it was pointed out that it would be perfectly reasonable once it was annexed in. And um, I guess I remember sitting in those meetings and, and hearing about the discussion of already having conference facilities in town and would rather. Uh, those follow the rules of the city than uh, just be on a fringe and have to grow around them. Among other things, golf courses, things like that too.
So what I think I hear you say in the rationale is that these are uses that you wouldn't expect should um, some part of the joint jurisdiction area be annexed. Um, these aren't, you know, I guess metro, I guess uh. Municipal uses, uh, is kind of what, for lack of a better term.
It was, it was, yeah, it was along the lines that the town would have to grow around them in some way, shape or form. Or else uh, the opposite of that was that they were things that were perfectly acceptable in town and they might as well just wait until they get annexed to do it.
Okay, so I guess um, the, the question I would have, maybe this isn't a, you know, maybe the bigger question that we need to ask ourselves is what's the rationale for, for not? Including religious conference facilities in the joint jurisdiction area. So that, you know, that's the question I have in my mind and I, you know, I'm not asking for an answer today, but I think that's one we need to, we need to give a fair answer to as we, we think this through.
Well, and for, for you to think about it, what was given at the time was that it was going to be a, a commercial use. On the fringe of town that ultimately could be accommodated within the city of Watertown already. And their land use plan as well as yours says that if a commercial use, albeit um, benevolent or even somewhat quasi uh, public. Um, if it can be accommodated within city limits, it should be if it's within the planning area. And also from a standpoint of just flat out, whether it is from this facility, obviously. At the time, we didn't know someone was going to come with a plan like this, which you know, may change. Uh, but in the same breath, if it's something like this or it's something that is just a conference center entirely, you're talking about something that competes with other conference centers. Um, with different standards out on the fringe of town. And so it's growing around it as well as competing with things that are following the rules of the city limits. That's what the argument was at the time. Does it hold water today? I don't know. That's up to you guys, but that's what the argument was at the time.
Yeah, I do, I do think we need to be careful of a one-size-fits-all kind of thing. So and this, and that's hard to do. That's what, you know, you're trying to deal with a lot of different questions as you, especially with zoning ordinances. So um, yeah, this.
So the thing, Commissioner Gable, the thing I might add to this as well is um, understanding that. Once you would allow any of these sorts of uses within that area, then you have to allow all. So you can't just let one in and not the rest.
Are you saying that if you have to, if you pick one of these off the list and say it's okay, then you have to have everything off the list or is that what?
You have to allow, like if, if you allow one conference in that area, you would have to allow other conferences in that area. You can't pick and choose. You have to allow.
Yeah, it, it may, it may have to, it may come down to it, you know, properly defining what's what, I think. But anyway, we, we don't need to go into a lot of detail, but I'm, I'm trying to frame the, understand and frame the question as we.
Yeah, I, I think what's, what's probably relevant um, from a, I'll, I'll take a step back as a professional land use planner and, and just point out. That what, from a, from a thirty-five-thousand-foot planning level for the city of Watertown, Kinden County. Um, is, city of Watertown is a component of Cottington County. Um, the land use plan for the city of Watertown would likely have to be amended in order to accommodate this sort of thing because right now. Um, on the fringe of town, it's allowed in town is the way that it sounds uh, from what they've said. But the bottom line is it would be a dynamic, it would be a change to the dynamic as far as the land use plan. And to, to Commissioner Hanton's point, uh, potentially not necessarily. You know, it doesn't mean that we're going to open the door to wind energy systems and, and uh, you know, government grain storage sites, although it may. Uh, what it does mean though is it would take a harder look at uh, uh, higher density residential as well as, well, I shouldn't say it that way. But definitely um. Commercial uses that were also excluded on purpose as well. So those are the couple of things from a land use policy thing that the city is going to have to look at if this is an amendment that they're interested in as well. So it's again, it's not just a county thing, it's a city thing too.
Okay, thank you.
Luke, I've got a quick, a quick question and it's goes down the road a ways if this would be all okay changed. Uh, beings this is. Under the, under religion, would that qualify that, that area, whatever that is for tax exempt status?
Um, it, it kind of depends. Our definition would not. However, in the ordinance, uh, the current ordinance, and I can't tell you for sure that it would mirror what we have in the county. Um, but one of those things is to have the five oh one C three status, I believe is what it's listed in there. If I'm not mistaken, I'd have to double check, but let's just put it this way. Just because the county calls it a religious conference facility doesn't mean that it is. Um, a religious entity or vice versa. Just because a religious entity is involved doesn't mean it's a religious conference facility by name. So I, I, that doesn't really answer your question. It's hyperbole, but uh, it's just kind of, it doesn't guarantee it.
Well, this is a hypothetical and stretches out for many, many bridges along the way, but uh. That might be the end, end deal of what they might be going for. That's why I was questioning.
But that's a tax question, not really a zoning question, I think, Charlie, but it's a good question, so.
That's an assumption.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions for Luke? Not hearing any. We will move on then to item number nine. Not hearing any. We will move on then to item number nine.
Thank you for coming.
Yep, thanks everyone. Action to accept community health worker program grant funds. So.
So I had one issue in this sent to you earlier when I was waiting for a question back in the Department of Health and so. I wasn't able to get it to you, but the good news is the Department of Health approved the grant for the community health worker. Um, and so that is an exciting thing. Um, but now. I have it before you so that you guys can decide if this is, if you want to accept the grant. Um, as we had talked about before, this grant is to um. Create a community health worker position it through the county, that person would be located or based out of the welfare office. But working in partnership with the sheriff's office, state's attorney and the detention center. Um, it to really work with individuals who are involved with the legal system, but not. Um, necessarily have receiving a lot of case management, like not getting. Um, not involved with drug court or probation parole, those kinds of things, just the um, high utilizers, but lighter. If that makes sense at all with that. Um, and so this employee would then. Do keep, provide intensive case management with the goal of preventing them from utilizing our legal services, making sure they got to court appearances when they needed to. Making sure they got to healthcare appointments, both mental health and physical health appointments, that kind of thing, following up with those kinds of things. And so. Um, I think this is an exciting opportunity for the county for. All of our agencies or all of our departments, I mean, to work together and to really um. Meet some needs in the county. Um, so I have, what I, what I just gave you is the narrative that I submitted for that. You can see in the evaluation piece, this is how we would track and, and I would, I'll get more detailed. Um, but. The measures to like, say, is it effective is that it would be reduced nights in the detention center by these clients. Increased follow through with meetings and appointments related to the court, including with a meeting with the public defender, court dates, assessments, all of those kinds of things. And then appointment follow through with service providers, including medical, mental health and social service agencies. So those are the ways that we would really measure the effectiveness of this. With um, the idea that if this is effective in meeting those measures that we would. The county would then pick up the position.
And that cost would be.
So um, the position was granted for January twenty, this year, twenty twenty two. Through May of twenty twenty three. That was what they approved. So that is seventeen months. Um, the annual, so what you have attached is what they approved. What I submitted was a twelve year proposal and the cost for the employee for a twelve year or, or twelve years. Sorry, I'm really. Jumping ahead there. The twelve month cost is fifty nine thousand dollars.
So it would cost the county after this program at least funding stop sixty thousand here.
Yes, that would be the employee cost for that. The hope is that it would save the county though. By the legal fees, the um, jail fees, um, that officer interactions that these would, that we would. Be, yes, we would be creating a position that would cost that amount with the goal. Of reducing costs throughout the county and that's really what we would be measuring for this next eighteen months, seventeen months, eighteen months.
So do I have the right thing on the screen?
Yes, that is the narrative. Yep. That's the narrative and then the budget is also attached in that email.
Uh, Sarah, so the total amount that was requested was a seventy four thousand, seven dollars and seventy nine cents. At the very first page. So what is that dollar amount?
Um, okay, so the seventy four thousand was the twelve month. The, but that includes expenses such as office, um, some. Those are the things that, that includes the training fees. It also includes um. Uh, setting up some office space for that, um, some annual things. So. So the employee cost is the fifty nine thousand. There may be some other expenses like. There's five hundred dollars to travel in there and some things like that, but um, those are.
Those are for other sorts of expenses.
Right. The grant covers. Their training and just computer and that and all of those things to get them set up.
So now when this is over with, the cost of the employee is sixty thousand dollars.
Yes.
That did not include travel. That does not include continuing education. That did not. Does that include the healthcare and?
It does include all of the healthcare.
And how many hours a week is that for?
Forty hours a week, forty.
Full time?
Yeah.
Cindy, what is the average cost for employees for full time with benefits?
Can't give you that unless I would know what hourly wage they're gonna get.
And what hourly wage would that be?
So this is based off of, um, I had talked to Natalie and we had placed them in the bracket, the wage bracket. Um, I can't remember exactly which bracket we was in, but we had placed it in the bracket. So this is. Based on that wage bracket where they would be along with all of the benefits.
What is the?
The retirement, health insurance, all of that are computed into the fifty nine thousand.
So what would the title be?
Community health worker.
Community health worker.
So within your budget right now, you have thirty nine thousand dollars. Um. Request twenty two six twenty, that was in your poor and professional services. Would this kind of fall under part of that?
Yeah, so if they were travel or in those kinds of things, that's where they would come out of in my budget is, is those professional services pieces. Yeah.
Um. Travel would be four twenty seven.
You're right, that would be under travel, but.
Yeah.
But like, but I'm.
Conferences and that, sorry.
That's all four twenty seven, sorry.
But.
Yeah, we just had a discussion with legislative audit on using the correct code.
Okay, so the thing is though, is you kind of have some money in your budget already for like a professional person, like, like if we do.
But salary cannot come out of that line. It's gotta come out.
I'm just saying she could move it up.
No, you can't move it.
Well, I mean, put it there and take that out if that's something.
No, you, you cannot move the line.
So, no, I know, but just zero that out and put that amount. If you don't think you're going to use professional services, you can lessen that and put it.
Yes.
When that time would come. If that's something that that purpose was supposed to be used for, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's one of the nice things about having the eighteen months. Is it would give me time to adjust the budget going forward and hopefully to adapt my budget so that it stays within. Um, yeah, uh, just moving numbers around for future budgets.
Yes, yeah, I mean, cause that's kind of what that line item was for, for professional services, if I remember correctly previously, but yeah, anyway.
Yep.
Um, but we have eighteen months to see if this is something that is beneficial for us.
Right.
I mean, we should know within a year and.
That's if we approve going forward with the grant, right? Because the grant basically says that you will assume all costs associated with this concluding. At the conclusion of the grant.
Yeah, so the um, and the. Where it says in the grant or in the narrative, the, and the sustainability. And that's that last paragraph, the hope is the position will prove to be an effective way to reduce costs to the county by meeting the goals identified. If it does prove effective, the goal is that the county commissioners would see the financial benefit and continue to financially support the position on the ongoing basis. Um, it would, this grant will give our county the opportunity to try a new model of care. So it does give us some opportunity. It doesn't. Tie us into it. Yeah, I mean, the reality is if, if somebody's coming in in a grant funded position. They have to know that it's not a guarantee.
That's what I was gonna say. We aren't required to continue this after the eighteen months. We still have that. Um, choice if we're, we're going to continue it or not.
Right. Um, one of the things that when I had met with the sheriff and the state's attorney and Matt with the jail, we had talked about Sioux Falls has a model. Pretty close to this. And so one of the things we'd like to do now that it's approved, if you, if the commissioners approve it. We'd like to spend some time with Sioux Falls, finding out what they do and how they really um, have implemented it so that. We can see an effective program and adapt it to Covington County.
And just so everybody that's listening and so that everybody has a good understanding. Of what this person is going to do, they're going to make sure that medical appointments are scheduled and attended. Assist clients in utilizing and following through with appropriate. Mental health services, securing housing, following up with their court appointed attorneys, attending court dates and other court mandated appointments. Position will also uh, work with community members such as defense attorneys, the state's attorney staff and detention center staff to provide education regarding effective ways. To address client concerns. Is that right?
Yep, so it's a caseworker.
Yeah, a caseworker with staff support as well, because that's one of the things we see too a lot in social services is staff. Get burnt out and need some support, um, connections that way as well.
Now, we've got, uh, excuse me, Chairman.
Go ahead, Charlie, go ahead.
Uh, go, go ahead, Lee.
No, I was just gonna say when you, when you lay it out, it sounds a lot like a pre-trial services kind of thing. Um. Which, you know, it could be very helpful. They do say, you know, that. Uh, some, some jurisdictions have a lot of success with some of these things like, you know, remind getting people to, you know, show up for court on time and all that kind of stuff to do all the pre-trial stuff to keep them out of. From getting incarcerated for missing, you know, for failure to appear or something like that. So is that, I mean. Is that kind of what this program is for? It's cause it sounds, it sounds a lot like a pre-trial office kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, to some extent, we, I mean, that's part of the reason that we talked about having it in the welfare office though is because we didn't wanna. Have it um, just with one department. Um, we also want to have the flexibility if. The sheriff's deputies have somebody that they're coming across frequently that just doesn't have good support and isn't um. Like it's just having that continual interaction with that this caseworker could meet with them and provide them some support. So it's taking less of the deputies' times. Um, it also people in the detention center that um, are maybe the frequent flyers. But not really having high offenses. So that we can hopefully keep them out. If housing is an issue, food is an issue, those kinds of things.
This sounds an awful lot like what we've done before.
It's, this sounds like, to me, and I, and I'm not saying I'm educated on everything, but to me, this sounds like a. Duplication of a lot of what we've got going right now. We've got the girls and boys club, which we're not including this. We've got. The regional center coming that we're gonna be building here for HSA with some safe rooms, et cetera. We've done medical things in the jail already, uh, and changed that around, which is working very good. The other part, we got sixty thousand dollars for wages. Uh, I can see this in eighteen months coming up to be an eighty thousand dollar a year deal. With another full-time employee and maybe even ninety thousand. Uh, for, for duplicity and a lot of, a lot of handholding. If we're gonna. Uh, you made the remark a couple of weeks ago or three weeks ago that I asked about. Getting uh, you know, following up on some of these people and making sure they're taking their bets. And you mentioned, well, that could be five years. Well, how many, how many years can we hold their hand? Sometimes you have to have some personal responsibility.
And that really is the ultimate goal is to get people responsible. One of the things we know with trauma and um. When people have lived in that, that it takes a long time to work through that trauma and to get people to the point where they're self-sufficient. So that definitely is the long-term goal of that is to get people self-sufficient. So they're not utilizing services. Working through the trauma and helping them get through, get the support that they need for that. One of the things that detention center has had. Really good luck having the medical care in the detention center. That has been wonderful. But in conversations with the nurse there, that the challenge is once they leave the jail. Yeah, they're, they're not getting the services. And so then they end up back in the jail because they didn't get the follow-up services. And so we want to avoid. Having them back in the jail.
The going back of not taking out away from this, but going back to a different government organization. Um, was to help people get food and to step up and be more self-sufficient. And things like that. And we've got that on for the third and fourth generations. And I can see this one going the same way.
Madam Chair, just.
Yes, Commissioner.
One point, I guess, I, I guess I don't track on how this is duplicative. Um, I do see. Unless there's something going on in, in say the, uh, you know, our local, maybe the, maybe the faith-based organizations in the area that do try to help with this. Somewhat, um.
Sounds a lot like what LSS used to do with our welfare office at one point, correct?
Are, are they, I guess, are they doing that? I'm not sure. We do that. Same thing. The, the other thing is I, I'm wondering if this, I mean, to me, this sounds a lot like what, we, for a while, we were thinking of using the uh. The PSA and um, with, which is something that's, it's a, it's a risk assessment about, you know, whether or not to put somebody to incarcerate somebody or not. Um, and one of the things we saw is that we needed, you know, we would need somebody in the pre-trial world just to manage that. It'd be a lot of work. But on the other hand, because there's certain things, you know, like what we discussed. I mean, I can't tell you who is, so who's helping people show up for court dates right now. I mean, other, unless they're actually in the jail, I mean. I don't know who's, who's doing that. Um, and that, that's personal responsibility, but um, so I guess I don't see the, I'm not seeing quite the redundancy. At least at the present time. Um. Then, so that's just, I just wanted to make that comment. And then the other. The question I had for Sarah, so if the CHW, this goes along with the program at, at LATI as I understand it. Um, and so what, what level of qualification would this person have? Um, would be my, is my question.
So, yeah, that's a good question. This person would be required, if they don't have a community health worker certificate, they would be required to um. Complete the community health worker certificate, which is the one-year program through LATC. And so that is budgeted as well in this grant um, for them to complete that certificate program. Um, Lake area has graduated a few people, but part of the goal through the Department of Health, their goal is to get like three hundred community health workers across the state. Because South Dakota is way, way behind other states in utilizing community health workers. This is one of the ways that other states already use community health workers. And so um, that's something that South Dakota is pushing. And so that would be. The um, expectation is either that they would already have that community health worker certificate or they would complete that within the first year.
Cold question and.
All right, um, then there is no more discussion and we will vote on this matter.
Can you call the vote?
I'm gonna have Cindy call the roll.
Thank you.
Yes, roll call.
Did we make a motion in a second yet?
No, we haven't, I guess, so we knew that.
I'll make a motion, motion to accept.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now Cindy call the roll.
So the motion and the second is to accept the grant funds.
Correct.
Okay, um, Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Van Duzen.
Aye.
Hampton.
Aye.
That is four in favor and one opposed.
All right, very good.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, item number, item number ten, action to approve the volunteer roster for workers compensation.
This is a requirement of our workers' compensation insurance that if we intend to cover our volunteers, that they have to be. Uh, action has to be taken by the board each year. So these volunteers. Include Cottington County Search and Rescue Team, uh, the LEPC. Cottington County Weather Spotters and Volunteers. And two emergency management volunteers. Uh, you have those lists in front of you and those will be kept on file. In case we need to provide evidence that we did take this action. And then during the year, if you have any volunteers. You just need to provide us with those names.
All right, motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any comments, questions?
And this is something that the county has done annually for a number of years.
All ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? That motion carries. All right, item number eleven, action to approve a weight and speed limit resolution. And Rick is here with the highway department to give us. While we have that in our pack, I'll let you explain.
Good morning. This is something that we do every year with the highway patrol. For our weight limits and speed reduction on all of our asphalt roads.
Right, and it goes into effect in February fifteenth?
Well.
Possibly.
Yeah, it depends on when we put up the signs. That's something that we determine.
While you read that, now therefore be it resolved.
Okay.
That spells out what we intend to do.
Okay, uh, now therefore be it resolved, the limits on Cottington County roads shall be forty miles per hour truck speed limit and a maximum load limit. Shall be seven ton per axle on all asphalt. and a maximum load limit shall be seven ton per axle on all asphalt surface roads during the spring thaw period effectively from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to May first, twenty twenty-two inclusive when limit signs are posted. So that could change. It's just whenever the limit signs are posted is like deterrence. That's kind of a timeframe, but it could be earlier or later depending on conditions.
Depends on the weather.
Yes.
You know, cause like right now, we don't have to worry about the weight limit.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, comments, questions?
Nope, that's fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? That motion carries. All right, action to approve purchase of fuel system for the highway department from Sarswell bid as budgeted. Like to explain that to us.
Okay, there's two bids, one from Westmore, they're from Minnesota, and the other one is from Sioux Equipment out of Sioux Falls. Uh, my recommendation is to take the Sioux Equipment bid of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred, nine dollars and thirty-four cents. This is to upgrade our fuel pumps, our station where we log in the information, the miles, vehicle, whatever, and then it all gets sent to the office coordinator's computer, which right now we're still running an old computer off Windows seven. So.
Which is probably not supported anymore.
Yeah, we.
One step up from DOS.
We need an upgrade pad.
Right.
Is this a budgeted?
Yes, this was a budgeted item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oops, sorry.
Okay, we got a motion by Gable, second by, second by Van Duzen?
Yep.
Okay, to accept the bill from Sioux Equipment. All right, any other questions?
Twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Yes.
Just to verify.
All righty, um, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? That motion carries. Very good. How long till they'll be able to do something like that, though?
That's a, that's what I was gonna tell, I, I asked, I got the same response. You don't know. When, when they get these, the stuff in, it's all.
Yeah.
Up for grabs, so.
Well, at least we're locked in, so we should be good.
Yep. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, um, item number thirteen, action to approve abatement applications.
We have two abatements. We can take, uh, one action, one motion on this. They are different. Uh, the first one is on a piece of property. The record number is one, zero, zero, two, two. It's a piece of property that suffered a loss because of fire, I believe, on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. And the abatement applied for is five hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. It has been approved by the Director of Equalization based on the information of the destroyed property. The second one is another where the applicant has qualified for an assessment freeze program through the state of South Dakota. Um, and the abatement amount on that one is one thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents.
So.
All right, motion by Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Gable. Any other comments or questions on that? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? That motion carries. Item number fourteen, action to approve claims for payment.
So we'll have three different actions on this item. The first one is a claim to the Watertown City Finance Office for November nine-one-one surcharge collections in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. And because, uh, Commissioner Van Duzen has a conflict, we will take this one separately.
All right, and he will accuse himself from that one, correct?
Correct.
The, the vote, okay.
Okay, approve.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any other comments, questions? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That motion carries. Okay.
Uh, the second is set of claims, our miscellaneous claims on our credit cards that we have to pay at this time of the month each year. Um, the first one is claim, we had, and we also had two, um, rec center reimbursements that, uh, did not get paid in January, or with bills in January earlier. First one is to Brenda Hampton for a hundred and forty dollars. The second one is to Shawna Carter, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. Both are employees who qualify per the policy on rec center reimbursement. Um, second one is a payment to Visa Relia Bank for a NACO registration in the amount of five hundred and twenty dollars out of the commissioner's budget. Second one is also Visa Relia Bank to the sheriff's office or for sheriff's office miscellaneous supplies, four hundred and ten dollars and eighty-six cents. And the final set of claims come out of the care of poor budget, and these are payments with ERA one and ERA two uh, grant funds, utilities and rentals. The total fund, grant fund amount, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. And we will be doing an automatic supplement, um, at the next meeting for these amounts. These are all covered by grant funds. This is the fund, the grant that South Dakota Housing was originally taking care of, and then they transferred it to the individual counties to take care of ourselves. So we do still receive payment for each one of these um, applications that we have processed. We do still receive grant funds for that also.
Right. It's just a wash, basically.
It, it is a wash, yes.
All right, looking for a motion, motion by Gable. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, do we have any comments, questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gable?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? That motion carries. How about item number fifty?
Oh, sorry, we have one more set of claims.
Oh, shoot.
Um, that's right. January salary claims.
There we go.
Salary claims total, six hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-seven cents. And per statute, we are required to publish the names of our employees receiving salary. Uh, the first, uh, payroll in January. Therefore, you can see on the list that everyone who is being paid this month, their salary has been listed.
All right.
Will it approve?
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, item number fifteen. Um, item.
Nothing today.
Nothing? How about personnel changes?
We do have one personnel change. Um, at a previous meeting, the board took action to approve Jamie Torstensen, our former emergency management, to be, um, placed on an on-call status when the emergency management office are unavailable or out of town. But we failed to set a dollar amount. So based on our previous on-call person, that would be twenty dollars per hour for anything that Jamie gets called out to in the absence of our, uh, full-time staff.
All right, look for a motion to approve that.
So.
Waterman, do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Gable. Any other comments or questions on that? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? That motion carries. Item number seventeen, action group travel requests. None today.
None today.
Public notices, possible quorum of commissioners.
I looked, I don't, when is the farm show? That is February, um, eighth through the twelfth. Okay, I will put that on there for the next agenda.
All right.
Our only, uh, other commissioners, I'm gonna be, uh, probably, uh, testifying by phone or remote means for the, uh, for a bill, uh, in peer on, uh, Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah, we can mention it. Commissioner Van Duzen said he might be out there, so we'll see if, yeah, and I possibly might be going. So, uh, we'll mention that just for public notice. Anything else? All right, do we have any old business? How about new business? Do we have anything for the open?
I, I have a question. You know, a while back, we were working with the townships in reference to, um, receiving some money from the state. Where's, that, I haven't heard it.
The cul- um, all the culverts have been located in that they cooperated with the highway department, and so that process is done. And so we're good with that. And then whenever the allotments are given out, we're, we'll be in line with that. And I think they, the township association is trying to make a couple of changes to that original bill, which is in the legislation this year as well. So.
So it has to pass through the legislature before anything can happen. Is that true?
No. Yeah, yeah, that original, there's just a couple of things that they wanted to tweak on it, like the fit, like they have to do fifty cents. I think they wanna say up to, there's a couple of things they wanna change. Has nothing to do with, that has already been determined and it goes according to how many culverts you have in your county. So that's all okay. Um, so we should receive those allotments. I don't know what month that is, but.
That's what I was wondering, you, you know, uh, the way they talk that it would, you know, come forth with, you know?
Right.
I haven't heard nothing. So I was wondering what was happening with that.
Something that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I didn't, didn't mean to.
Something that we are going to have to determine as a board too is, um, how much, how are we going to determine which culverts, you know, when they come to us? And so we need to work on that as well. And I think they were going to, um, come up with a form, you know, kind of like the big program that we can use and simplify that. So, um, that's forthcoming. The money's, I think, supposed to be in there, but we need to figure out the process at our level as well.
It's a pretty good chunk of money, I know. I, I, from what I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't remember this.
No, that was, I was gonna mention is that, um, you know, so we need to basically figure out what the criteria are in order to prioritize the different projects. And do you know, is, now that the inventory is done, is the, is there some kind of a spreadsheet or something that we can, you know, just have as a reference that for the, yeah, I guess the small structure inventory in the county?
I believe that will be available on a state, um, website at some point that you can go in there, but yes.
Okay. And then the other, so, and then you just, I think you already kind of answered my question, but I think I heard you say that the, the thing that the legislature is looking at is that minimum fifty, fifty cent levy.
Yes.
For a town, okay.
Yes, cause that forced them right now to do it. And a lot, you know, there's some that don't need it. So it's kind of, you know, not necessary. So there's a couple of changes they wanna tweak, but that's not gonna affect the dollar amount. That's just the process, so.
Okay.
My, my reason for asking the question is the township's annual meeting is coming up very quickly.
Yeah.
And that'd be kind of, that's one time when they actually do get together and do conduct, uh, considerable lot of, of business. And that's, it'd be nice if we had some information for them at that time.
Right. I would like to see Dustin Lyseth come to that meeting maybe and have conversations with them. They did have, hold the annual conference here in Watertown that I attended. And, um, uh, the representative who's kind of been the, the one involved the most was here. And I had a brief conversation with him. So, yeah, I agree, it would be good once, you know, once, I think the legislative session will still be in. So they won't know the answers yet, but yes, I agree. I think it would be good so that they understand the process also. But the culverts are all registered, so we're good on that.
Thank you. Thanks. That's a good question, Mira. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, do we have a need to go into executive session?
Okay, good.
Motion to adjourn by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or adjourned?